I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, January 19th, 2010 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. This evening, we have Pastor Glenn McCraney to lead us in our invocation, and then we have a special guest that I'll introduce after him for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We please stand. Dear God, grant your divine wisdom upon our county commissioners as they meet tonight. Instill within them holy hearts with a holy purpose, with visions of service to the people of Currituck County. May they feel the deep responsibilities of their elected offices, enlighten their hearts and minds that they may behold the ever-dawning of a new and bright future for our beloved county. As residents of this historical area, may we, as a grateful people, seek to serve rather than be being served. May we celebrate the riches of life, freedom, and liberty which has been bestowed upon us by the sacrifice of others. Guide us when we do not know which way to turn. Let us live and cherish your daily mercies in our lives. In this we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing. We have Girl Scout troop, Currituck troop 2428 is going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, and then I think they may even have a little something to say to us. Ladies, please lead us.
(inaudible) 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 Hi, my name's Elise Santa. I'm in troop 2428, as already said. Today, I'm going to talk about a Silver Award and other community service that Girl Scouts do. A Silver Award is the highest award you can earn as a Cadet Girl Scout. It recognizes your effort in a range of Girl Scout and community experiences, as well as your commitment to working to better your life and the lives of others. My Silver Award project is to create and explore Currituck County Patch. An Explore Patch is a patch that allows other girls to explore a city or county. This specific patch is the first and only patch made for Girl Scouts to learn more about Currituck County. Some destinations on this patch will include the Currituck Visitor Center, Powell's and Morse Farmers Markets, Grave Digger, and several historical and cultural attractions, like the Currituck Courthouse. One of the service projects that we have participated in is making toilets kits, toiletry kits, for Centerra Nursing Home, the toiletries collected by Moyagüe United Methodist Women's Group. We sorted and bagged 38 bags of toiletries. We also need cards for the residents. Since we were too young to go to the nursing home, our leader went and helped pass out the bags and cards.
Hi, I'm Becky Thompson, and I'm here to talk to you about the Gift of Caring Program. With the Gift of Caring Program, any girl can participate. First, we choose the people we want to give the boxes to. This year, we've chosen the USS Ream, which is the ship that my dad's on. When we take orders, we ask our customers if they would like to purchase a box to, you know, donate. When all of our cookie money comes in, we send them out to the ship. Each year, hundreds of Girl Scouts participate in the Gift of Caring Program by asking customers to purchase cookies that they donate to a local charity or a deserving organization. Last year, nearly 26,000 boxes were donated. I'd also like to mention cookies from home. It's an option for businesses to purchase a case or more of Girl Scout cookies that are sent directly to our military men and women overseas, or that are recovering in military hospitals. And now, we'd like to give a box of cookies to each of you.
Thank you.
You're like a young lady. (inaudible)
Can't start eating them now. Well, young ladies, we really thank you for coming tonight. We're proud of your organization and what you do, and our board would certainly encourage you to continue the community service that you do. It's a good thing to start early in life and continue all through your life. Now, if somebody at home watching this tonight wants to get Girl Scout cookies, is there a phone number they could call to get Girl Scout cookies? Because I know a lot of people look forward to them, and if you give us a name, you don't have to, but...
We can give you a phone number.
Okay.
It's 232...
232.
00...
00. 232-0022.
Tell them that you're calling about Girl Scout cookies.
Okay. If you want Girl Scout cookies, 232-0022. Tell them that you want some cookies.
That's right.
All right.
We're in it anyway.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item one on the agenda is approval of agenda. We have a couple of amendments to the agenda. First Amendment would be to continue item three until the Board of Commissioners can have a work session to discuss that item. In the consent agenda, add item nine, resolution to appoint ABC Board Chairman, and then a closed session under 143-318113, to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Move for approval of the amended agenda.
I have a motion for approval. Commissioner Etheridge?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Idlet, any further discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. Item four, consideration of ordinance permitting and regulating golf carts on public roads. Oh, I'm in a hurry tonight. I'm sorry. We have two people. Item two is a public comment. We have two people signed up for public comment. We have Ms. April Bennett, and she wants to sign up for item four, so we'll call you forward when we get to item four. We had Jennifer Simon.
Mr. Chairman, there is no public hearing with item number four.
There is no?
There's no number required.
Okay. Well, if you would like to speak, please come forward now, then.
Good evening. My name's April Bennett. I reside on Bell's Island. About a year and a half ago, in August of 2008, some of my neighbors and I from Bell's Island came before you and made a request that you should consider an ordinance allowing golf carts, not for 10-year-olds or younger children, but legal use, like many other counties have, to permit responsible residents to enjoy the uses of golf carts in communities with 35 miles an hour speed limit and under. Well, here we are, a year and a half later, and I have some documents that I extracted from the Internet from tonight's agenda package. One is a memo from Mr. McCree, the county attorney, directed to you with the packet enclosed. It has the draft of the law that was passed this past summer at the General Assembly, signed by the governor, and it also has the draft of the ordinance being presented to you tonight for approval. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you for your efforts. I know this is a lot of work, and there's a lot of things going on, and I don't have the first idea of what it takes to run a county, but you're doing a good job, and I appreciate you taking the time to present this to the General Assembly. Apparently, this was quite popular because when this was presented, apparently, the General Assembly went ahead and signed this into law statewide. I think that's to be commended. For those that don't totally understand the range of benefits with this bill, law, it's not merely about something frivolous where somebody can just jump on a golf cart and go riding down the neighborhood. And talking with my neighbors and seeing for myself, this does improve relations. If you need to run across the island, in our case, instead of jumping in your car and using gas, you jump in your generally a battery-operated vehicle, which in this day and age of green awareness is very good. So, you're out, out in the fresh air, you're enjoying it, plus you have additional eyes out and about, you know, for community watch. I was speaking with a neighbor of mine that I've gotten to know here lately, and I would see her at picnics and such on her golf cart. Well, this neighbor is confined to a wheelchair. She doesn't have the use of her legs. And she just told me the other night, she was really happy about this, how she can ride in her golf cart up to a picnic or to somebody's deck where she's not permitted to go into their house because most homes aren't equipped for handicap personnel. And she was really excited about this and had wanted to be here tonight, but because of a prior engagement, couldn't attend. We have our neighbors that are in their golden years, have arthritis in their knees, can't ride a bicycle, and instead of riding, you know, being in a car, they can get in their golf cart and ride around. Have a friend who, about a year ago, she lost her husband, and neighbors in this county, being like they are, they brought her food. Well, she had one of her friends with the golf cart, put her in the golf cart, put some music in, and they went back and returned the tuckware to the neighborhood, and it took a daunting task, and it made it something kind of light and airy. So, aside from those human factors being important, we also have businesses in this county that buy, sell golf carts, that employ people to sell these golf carts, fix these golf carts. I'm thinking that maybe if this does get passed with your approval, maybe we'll have more sales and maybe a few other jobs here and there, increase in revenue and so on. In closing, I just wanted to say that this is a good ordinance, and I do appreciate your work, and I hope that this goes through without dispute. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett, I forgot to ask you to give your complete name and address when you came forward for the record. Could you please do that?
Yes, it's April Bennett.
Okay. An address?
I live on Bell's Island.
Okay.
(inaudible).
Should I give that, Ms. Keane? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Jennifer Simons. Ask you also, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Simons. I live at 110 Wendy Hill Court in Idlet. Like to read some comments I prepared regarding proposed Mid-County Bridge project. Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman O'Neill. I would like to first tell you how pleased I am with your efforts to attract green businesses, control development on both the mainland and the Currituck Outer Banks, as well as the protection of the wild horses that still roam relatively free. I would also like to thank you for your formal opposition to option B of the planned bridge. Also applaud the efforts of Vice Chairman Idlet to bring the board closer together and examine issues and interests instead of positions. I feel that the Mid-County Bridge has become such a political issue that common sense eludes This $660 million project has taken so much of your time and energy that less intrusive methods have not gotten their due consideration. This all comes at a time when North Carolina faces a $4.6 billion deficit for the budget year of 2010, and it looks to get worse for 2011. I must say that I love the trolley idea put forth by the county. It's worked beautifully in Virginia Beach to use the traffic at the oceanfront, as we all know. People come to the Outer Banks to fish, to see the wild horses in lighthouses, to birdwatch, relax on the beaches, and yes, to party. The trolley system would not only ease local travel headaches by giving another option other than to hop in their cars and go to the local restaurants, shops, and bars, but it would keep all of us safer and provide needed employment. The fact is that any popular vacation spot is going to have traffic. I challenge you to name me one that doesn't have traffic during the height of its season. The northern Outer Banks is limited by landmass. It's a very narrow strip of land, and that we can all agree on. A bridge will not affect that traffic one bit. It will only create more choke points and more traffic. After all, it is only a one-lane bridge each way. What happens when there's an accident on the bridge? The traffic will back up to Barco and beyond, and no one will be getting anywhere soon. Also feel that the rental agencies could bear some responsibility in alleviating the traffic as well. Each rental company could have their rentals put into a rental pool, spreading the days that the renters arrive equally over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. One-third of the homes would have Friday, one-third would have Saturday, one-third would have Sunday, and that would be rotated yearly to make it fair for all the rental homeowners and agencies. That would obviously help the traffic on the days that the renters arrive, instead of having the thousands of vacationers arrive all at once. The way it is now, a lot of renters leave in the dead of night to avoid the traffic and don't have the opportunity to use their full vacation time that they've already paid for. I'm sure a lot of people would love to come in on Friday night and leave the following Friday and have some time before heading back to work. It also may encourage people to come for three-day weekends, arriving Friday and leaving Sunday, especially now in uncertain economic times. These simple solutions remind me of a story about an 18-wheeler that gets stuck under a bridge overpass. Everyone is looking up for the solution and freeing the truck. After all, it is stuck up there. They spend hours trying to pull it free to no avail and doing further damage to the bridge and to the truck. And a curious young boy comes up and wants to help his dad. Says, Daddy, why not make the truck shorter? The tires are at eye level for him. With that simple suggestion given by someone with a different perspective, the air is let out of the tires, freeing the truck and doing no additional damage to the bridge or the truck. In closing, my point is that sometimes we put all of our energy into trying to make an idea work. We put all our eggs in that one basket and hope for the best. It creates a tunnel vision in the way we approach our problem, and the simplest and least intrusive solutions get lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. She was the last person we had signed up. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Hearing none. We're going to close the public comments. Now, move to the next item, which is consideration of ordinance permitting and regulating golf carts on public roads. That would be Mr. McCree.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You've been very ably and accurately conveyed the history of this matter, how it has come before you this evening. I would add that at your retreat last January, you did endorse and place upon your legislative agenda the request that General Assembly adopt a local act adding Currituck County to several other units of government that up to that time had the authority to authorize the operation of golf carts on public roads. And as Ms. Bennett pointed out, the General Assembly, because of the multiple requests received, other units of government converted it into a statewide bill, and now it's applicable to all cities, towns, and counties in the state of North Carolina. Also included in your agenda package is a copy of the act that was ultimately adopted by the General Assembly, which gives the Board of County Commissioners the authority to adopt an ordinance to regulate and permit the operation of golf carts with certain restrictions upon the public streets, roads, and highways of the county, and in particular those streets and roads and highways that do not have a speed limit exceeding 35 miles per hour. What is before you is a proposed ordinance that would allow for the operation of golf carts on the public streets, highways, and roads of Currituck County with certain conditions. First of all, I'll point out that in preparing this ordinance, I looked at a number of ordinances already adopted by, I could really only find towns or counties that had adopted the ordinance on my online search of municipal codes that are online through some services that I have access to. And they frankly had a lot of other conditions, such as registration and inspection and stickers or permits being issued by their respective towns or cities. This is not designed to do that. This is designed to be more straightforward in that, once this is adopted, if it is adopted, the regulations would be in place, and then someone, meaning these particular regulations, would be allowed to go forth and operate the golf carts in accordance with the ordinance without having to go through the process of paying a fee to the county, going through an inspection or registration or sticker process. Proceeding now to the ordinance, I'll just kind of quickly run through and highlight some points, and I wanted to highlight for you in particular some points that were raised by the sheriff and her staff upon their review of this ordinance. And what's before you on your bench tonight is a modified version, which you receive in your agenda pack, with highlights in red of language that was modified to address concerns expressed by the sheriff. After we start with section 12-64, the proposed ordinance, which is a definitions section, I'll then ask you to turn to page two, and we'll begin to get into the meat of the ordinance. And again, I'm going to point out the points, first of all, the sheriff raised. Looking at line 22 on page two of the ordinance, you'll see that there's a suggestion of striking the language with regard to an operator with the age of 18 and possession of handicap parking space, tag, being allowed to operate a golf cart on the streets. After talking with the sheriff, and it was my suggestion we strike that, but after hearing Ms. Bennett describe an instance on Bell's Island, I now see that probably is a necessity of having that provision remain in the ordinance because it may well be that someone who is unable to drive a motor vehicle and cannot receive a license to drive a motor vehicle, which is required under this ordinance and all other events, to operate a golf cart on the streets, they may well be able to operate a golf cart. And so, I would suggest residents in eliminating that provision at line 22, that that remain, that someone who is disabled, yet over the age of 16 qualifies for handicap parking tag and is able to submit a statement from their position that they can operate a golf cart, would be able to operate a golf cart on the streets. Going on down to line 27 on page two, the suggestion was to strike the words "and reflectors", such that golf carts could be operated only during daylight hours unless they were equipped with operating lights. The first draft to you also would say, "or reflectors that could be seen 500 feet away when illuminated." The sheriff felt like that was a safety issue and a concern, and so she suggested, and now what's before you, is a recommendation to strike reflectors so that golf carts can be operated only in daylight hours, except when they have the proper operating lights, and then the lights, the type of lights that would be required for nighttime operation are described there, beginning in line 30 of page two. Going on to page three, the next suggestion or question raised by the sheriff, beginning at line three, which speaks to golf carts shall not be operated on any sidewalk, pedestrian walkway, multi-use path, jogging path, greenway, et cetera, except by law enforcement, county employees, or contractors on county business. The sheriff's question or concern was, how would we know a contractor in particular is on county business? As they evidently have some instances in Corolla where they stop folks and they claim they're on county business when they're not sure that they are or not. So, what is suggested to be added, again at line five, is a statement or language that a contractor on county business who carries on their person county-issued credentials, evidence, even work for the county, and that could be simply a written statement coming from the county administration acknowledging and identifying this person as being a contractor doing work for the county.
Sheriff, I have a question here.
Yes, sir.
How does this apply to golf courses that people use as multi-use paths, walking and jogging on, cart paths?
It would not affect the operation of golf carts on a golf course.
But I know, like, people frequently have, people have access to use the cart paths to jog or walk on.
Well, I would say that the primary purpose for that path is obviously in conjunction with the golf course and the golf carts, although secondarily, they may allow for persons to go upon the golf course in order to walk.
It's also on private property, isn't it?
But that is on private property as well, yes. The example here is, and intent obviously is, we're getting ready to construct a multi-use path in Corolla. This would prohibit someone from being able to take their golf cart onto that multi-use path, and in particular, any other that we might acquire ownership of, particularly on the Outer Banks. Paragraph, line nine on page three was another question or issue raised by the sheriff. The language originally called for a golf cart operator to maintain the golf cart in a safe condition. So, we had some discussions, well, what does that mean? I think the intent and some better language has now been proposed, which would say that golf cart operators should maintain, manufacture, install safety devices and equipment on the golf cart in good repair and operable condition, to make sure that, again, all these safety features that may be installed, particularly the rearview mirror that would be required, is operable and in good condition. And lastly, line 22 would propose an additional condition on the operation of golf carts, and this was another concern expressed by the sheriff, that persons not be able to increase the occupancy or capacity, basically, of a golf cart by adding a trailer or cart or something of that nature, to tow behind it, and then, of course, with the condition to make clear that it would be unlawful to also attach someone on roller skates or skateboard to the back of the golf cart or bicycle and tow them around that way. The next section is 12-67 with regard to exceptions, that you could operate a golf cart otherwise within the county to, first of all, of course, cross a road from one portion of a golf course to another, if the road that's being crossed has a speed limit of no more than 35 miles per hour. Likewise, to cross a road at an intersection where the road that's being crossed does not have a speed limit exceeding 35 miles per hour, and that would conform with the limitations imposed by the General Assembly's adoption of the law authorizing the adoption of this type of ordinance. Again, line number 31, to make clear, to be able to identify persons who may be county contractors on county business, it would require, as stated earlier, some type of credentials that would have been issued by the county, evidence in that they are indeed county contractors. And then, lastly, the use of golf cart in connection with a parade, festival, or other special event, provided the consent of the sponsors obtained and the golf cart is used during that particular event. Next, on page four, section 12-68 would propose a liability disclaimer, to essentially, or basically just say that any persons who are going to utilize a golf cart on the public streets, roads, and highways of the county would be assuming the risk and do so at their own risk. But the county is not in any way endorsing, in particular, whether this is a safe type of thing to do, but it's something that you may do in this county, and the burden is going to be upon the operator or user of the golf cart to take care of a proper lookout and compliance with all relevant laws and regulations. Lastly, line 11 on that same page will amend the enforcement and penalty provisions of the ordinance to add this particular ordinance to that type of enforcement action that might include the issuance of a civil citation by the sheriff's department, which like for parking or other types of violations, before we say have recently developed a civil citation format. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? I have a couple of comments and maybe a question or two, but maybe relevant to our discussion for it, too. County attorney and I discussed today earlier the clause number one under limitations of safety criteria, like golf carts not being driven across any road or intersection where the road is being crossed has a posted speed limit of more than 35 miles an hour. There's another class of vehicles that are in use in the county. Ms. Bennett and the president have one. I have one as well, called an LSV. You may have seen signs for street legal golf carts. These vehicles are actually titled under an entirely different section of the code and have different operating limitations. They in fact have all the safety equipment of regular vehicles, so they're not included in this particular ordinance. Those vehicles have been tested from time to time crossing roads where they're not supposed to be, for instance, Route 158 down in Grandy, I know, especially, not myself. But it's been held that actually they are allowed to cross roads with a speed limit higher than 35, just not travel on them. And I think really, I would like to see this parallel to that because I think people would use them, in fact, for doing neighborhood shopping and such things, crossing and intersections where... where their lights, I know Barry would love to hear this, where Walman Island, the light there, they could come out of Walman Island, go across to the Food Line Plaza, I think without endangering themselves in doing that. And another question, too. I've seen many people use golf carts to tow and launch jet skis in various neighborhoods, Waterside, probably Bell's Island, they may do it. I know they do it over at Rivers Edge, too. So the limitation for any kind of trailer or cart, I think some people actually use cart and carts with them, too, that may be more of a limitation than is necessary if they're being used within the confines of the neighborhood. And there are specific neighborhoods that I would address, like Eagle Creek, and Rivers Edge, and Waterside, and even the whole of Bell's Island, which are not thorough neighborhoods. They only have one road in and out, and so therefore, they don't really have any high-speed traffic going through there. It might, you know, mitigate some of the conditions that would be related to safety. Next, I don't know.
I've talked to several people and concerns, and I've not found a county in North Carolina that has adopted an ordinance like this myself. And I asked Mr. McCree to make sure that that was my case, because there's nothing on record that any county in North Carolina's got such an ordinance. I think that we need to include, there are cities, and that's where we fall in problematic area for myself. If you take a place like Walman Island subdivision, that has a lot of these running up and down the streets now, they have to cross a 45 mile an hour speed limit at the stoplight to get to Food Line, and you're not going to stop them. The other thing, we have Waterby Shores, which has the speed limit required, and 35 miles an hour down Papa Branch Road there. But you have vehicles that could transfer from there over to Steeple Chase, and then to 158, to the service station there, or wherever they want to go. And that's going to create a major problem. The other major problematic areas that I've gotten phone calls about this would be at the beach. Whalehead Beach, all of the roads in Whalehead Beach are 25 miles an hour. And already, all of those three main thoroughfares are bringing people from Corolla Light, Monterey Shores, to the Monterey Shore Shopping Center in Timbuktu. And if you overload those areas with golf cars, you're going to really increase the traffic problems there. You're going to have the same situation in Ocean Sands. And I would submit to the board that I, and I'm totally for the green nature, and this is a good idea for communities. And if we were a city, I think we'd be looking at it a little bit differently than the way that we have to look at it. And I have no problem in supporting it for a community such as Bell's Island, where the majority of the people in Bell's Island want it, nor would I have any problem supporting it if the majority of the residents at Walman Island wanted it. But I think it should be incumbent upon us is to not address this to the entire county, but that we do it in subdivisions that we deem it be appropriate and safe for. Because I think all of us know that it's not safe. It is not safe to allow this in Whalehead Beach. And it's not safe to allow it on either side of Papa Branch Road. Because in that stretch between my house and the Baptist Church, it's opened up. It's a 45 mile an hour speed limit that drops down to 35, but there are people doing 70, 80 miles an hour. And we already have trouble with skateboards and rollerbladers and everything else on that road now. And we do have a few golf carts. And there are a lot of people that are dependent upon, I think, the golf carts in Walman Island. I mean, there's some people that use them because they are convenient, and just as was pointed out by April, you know, it's good for that. But I think we need to address it, so that we address it with specific areas, and that we do not let it be blanked on the whole county. Does that make sense, Mr. Chairman? And I assume that we can do that.
You certainly have the authority to do that.
I mean, if the property owners association, the majority of the property owners in Bell's Island want it, then fine, let's do it. If the majority of the property owners in Eagle Creek wanted it, and they do, then it would be allowable there. But if the majority of the property owners in Whalehead Beach and Walman Island don't want it, then we shouldn't allow that unsafe condition to apply countywide.
The response to our mission, Elms is saying, we already have done that in one instance with the leash law, the initial beginnings of the leash law, where we let subdivisions or communities petition if they want to be included underneath of it. I don't see any reason why we can't do it here.
Thank you. I think it'd be a good idea.
Develop some type of threshold that would require petition or something like that.
One of the concerns I had is, Mr. Nelms talked about the Whalehead subdivision. Well, I'm going to come out to NC 12, there's sections of NC 12 that is 35 miles an hour. Can you imagine an armada of golf carts on NC 12 on July 4th weekend, even though its speed limit is 35 miles an hour? Do you know what that is going to look like? It's going to be a disaster. So, while I agree that, you know, Bell's Island wants to have it, Churches Island, Walnut Island, Eagle Creek, whatever, but I would have to confer, agree with the concerns about, you know, any road that's 35 miles an hour, there's some 35 mile an hour roads you don't need a golf cart on. And even when the traffic's not moving at the 35 mile, you don't need a golf cart on it. And then I guess my other concern is the nighttime driving. Because I've got in my mind, well, if I drive a golf cart, I won't get a DWI, because I won't be driving a vehicle. And that is one concern that I would have about after, you know, nighttime driving with the golf carts. I mean, people think that, you know, hey, I'm getting a golf cart, throw me a cooler or beer in the back, go to the block parties or whatever, and I'm driving a golf cart. But, you know, you can get killed just as much in a golf cart as you can in a car, or call somebody else to get killed. So I think that it needs to be refined a little, address the concerns of Bell's Island, Eagle Creek, even where you live, Janet, and so forth. But I just, I share a couple of those concerns that have been expressed tonight.
I think, isn't alcohol the drifts in there, right?
Yes.
I think that's considered just like you would have called, for alcohol.
That's correct.
Well, I know it's considered just like a car, but the person driving it may not consider it just like a car.
There's been people convicted driving, riding lawnmowers.
You know, I can just drive my golf cart to the party and throw concern to the world because I'm not driving a car.
About all you can do, about all you can do is make it unlawful, law, you know, you just, if somebody wants to do it, they're still going to be able to do it.
That's true.
But if you've got the law against it, you know, there's no way to stop it if somebody is just bound and determined to jump on it.
How many, Mr. Chairman, how many communities have indicated that they're for this?
Well, I've only heard from Bell's Island, but I'm sure there's other communities that, you know, after tonight are going to indicate they're for it. But I think taking the approach where we just kind of do it and make sure we don't have them out on a main highway, or NC 12 and different places.
I think what Mr. Nelms said is exactly right. If folks on Bell's Island, such communities as Bell's Island, it would be perfect for these carts, really. But you've just got to take them on an as-con basis and look at the circumstances involved.
If I may just interject, if, from what I'm hearing from your discussion, it sounds like maybe we need to do a little bit more work on this, taking into some of the ideas about doing it, much like the leash law, with regard to certain neighborhoods, how they might request to be added to this, to make some certain restrictions for some of the identified roads that you could not operate on them in any event, and bring that back to your first meeting in February, if that makes sense.
I think Mr. Rohr's made a couple of comments, too, like if you're pulling a jet ski or something from, you know, whatever, that's something we need to consider as well. Now, skateboarding, I've seen them pull them on skateboards, too, and if I was 16, they'd probably be pulling me on a skateboard, but...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move, we follow the county attorney's recommendation, and then we, before we do the siding of it until our next first meeting in February.
Yeah, that probably makes good sense. So we have a motion from Commissioner Etheridge, second, from Commissioner Gregory. Any further discussion?
Well, I might comment, too, that if any of the communities, if anybody's watching, want to get your vision for being included in this bunch, to let us know as soon as possible, maybe we'll know how much interest there is.
Yeah, we can contact the county manager's office, and we'll certainly include you. We're not looking to exclude anybody, we're just thinking of it from a big picture. Do we vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign. Item five is appointment to Recreation Advisory Board. We have, it looks like every one of them's up for appointment, is that correct?
That is correct. And at least three are, have served two terms and are not available for reappointment.
All right.
It was, it was all a question of whether or not. I think that can...
Okay, I'll put on the floor for each commissioner to nominate their appointment, and we'll do them all as one group. Mr. Idlet?
I'm going to take the one for this week.
Okay, Mr. Rohr?
I had a discussion with Mr. Bell earlier on, and I think he is interested in the Wally Club since his chairman trusts there, and also on the ABC board, that recreational board is a little bit too much for him. So I'm going to nominate Suzanne Everhart to take this place.
Suzanne Everhart. Mr. Nelms?
I'd like to defer, honestly, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Etheridge?
I'd like to reappoint Sam Casey.
We have Sam Casey, Ms. Taylor?
Next meeting, please.
Mr. Gregory? Okay, and I'm going to reappoint Ms. Cynthia Hampton. So we had three of them. Ms. Keen, could you read them back?
This is Ms. Everhart, Mr. Casey.
Cynthia Hampton.
Yes. I'd just like to add a little note in there, too. I know that there was two applications in there that you can go on the county website if you're interested in being appointed to any board. I've not talked to anybody. There is no one from Moayak that has signed up to be on the recreation board, so if you will do that, or if you'll contact me for the Moayak district.
Okay. I think Mr. Nelms would like...
I didn't have my glasses on, and I thought Denise could not be reappointed, but I've seen she can be.
She can be.
She can be, yeah. I would like to reappoint Denise Fallon.
Okay, and Ms. Fallon, we need a motion for approval?
Certainly.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Etheridge, second, from Commissioner Taylor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, item five, or item six, is appointment to Planning Board. Let's see, I believe we have Mr. Nelms, Ms. Taylor, and myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Susan Taylor of Ocean Hill to replace Bryn Robbins. Bryn is taking care of her husband and is, simply has to be able to step down.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
Joe Coebbs, please, for a second, Chairman.
Okay, and I'm going to nominate John Wright. Need a motion for approval?
Certainly.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Nelms, a second, from Ms. Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, light sign. All right, item seven is discussion and consideration of waiving building permit fees. I believe, Mr. Nelms, you would like to address this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This was an item that we had discussed as a board, I think, several times before. And in light of the increasing loss of jobs in Currituck County, I would just like to see the board sit down with the county manager, county attorney, and the building inspector, and see what type of efforts we could have to reduce the burden on construction in Currituck County, which is at an all-time low right now. I think we did have a total of eight permits in the last two weeks that were applied for, which is an increase on what we have had. But in visiting the suppliers and the subcontractors since I've been back, things have gone from bad to worse, if that's possible. And I would just like to see the board consider some sort of action where we could offer some sort of small help or stimulus. We can't actually give them money, but we could give them some services in the form of not charging for fees for a certain period of time. And I would just like for us to put this for action in the very, very near future.
How would you like to proceed? Would you like for the staff to come back with a recommendation to us, or would you like to...
Yes, sir. I express the desire, and I'm willing to meet, and any other commissioners that will be willing to meet, I think we should involve the county manager, the attorney, and one or two persons from the planning department and from the building inspectors department. They're all willing to help, and they're all willing to help preserve their jobs, too, which is what we would be doing. And I don't know how effective it will be. You know, the name stimulus didn't seem to have a whole lot of effect for Currituck County when we heard what the federal government was going to do. But I think that we have a tremendous amount of people in our county that still reside here and live here and depend on the building business for their livelihood, and all of them have run out of unemployment compensations. And I'd just like for us to see, to try to make some effort.
How about you and the manager put something together and get it out to some of the board members, and who can make it, can make it, and come back with a recommendation?
Be glad to, thank you.
Okay. Item eight is consent agenda.
Move for approval.
I have a motion for approval from Commissioner Etheridge, second, from Commissioner Gregory. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign. Item nine is commissioner's report. Ms. Taylor?
Just a quick thought, a note of sympathy, a very sweet lady in Currituck County and its high school athletes over the years. Ms. Diane Barker passed away two weekends ago. Her daughter is employed by Currituck County in the planning department. Stacy Smith and her son, Brian Willoughby, is employed by the county over in Parks and Recs. Ms. Diane was a super lady, big, big volunteer, as her children were in school, not only the her children, but a lot of other children. And she lost her battle, but a very proud woman, and my condolences along, I'm sure with boards, to her children and her family members.
Thank you. Mr. Nelms?
Just that the Alamo Commission meets this Thursday night, and I'll be there representing the county. And one of our big pushes is to try to get job training in Currituck County to help for new job opportunities, hopefully, that the Alamo Commission can bring to the county. And I solicit the public to pay attention. I've gotten a lot of phone calls about this job and that job that people didn't know about, but the county does advertise the jobs. The board just got a job opening at Knott's Island for someone at the senior center over there, and that job is available 30 hours a week at 10:75 an hour for somebody that meets the qualifications. And I think we've had an average of 50 to 60 people having Mr. Scanlon apply for every job that we've had, but that job is available. And I want you to know that as your commissioner of Currituck County, I'm going to do all I can to see that the Alamo Law Commission helps out Currituck County and helps out the entire Alamo Law region, to try to bring in some job training for some new jobs, because we have to diversify. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rohr? Mr. Gregory? Mr. Etheridge?
Couple of things. One, one of our fellow commissioners, Mr. Jimmy Harris, I think passed away yesterday. I'd like to provide him over him with some news prayers. Secondly, I read the other day where Mr. Oscar Frost, who is a noted African American in Currituck County, has... What was that? Has a rather extensive collection of personal papers that is housed down in the Outer Banks History Center in Mania. And as we're developing buildings here that can house that type of thing, I'd like to see if it'd be possible, we could get those papers in Currituck County, where Mr. Frost was such an integral part in what happened in African American history in Currituck County. So just see what it would take, if it's even possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Idlet?
Yes, I attended the induction of Mr. Bakus yesterday, the secretary of the safety division of the Baywood Hall theme. There was a very nice turnout of Currituck County residents that spoke very well for Currituck, and they applauded him, and they spoke about the experiences they have had with him, and he was really surprised and really touched. So it was a very nice ceremony.
Is that it? I have two things. I checked with Ms. Keen today about the status of the railroads in Moayak, as whether they were going to start cleaning the ditches out or not. And I don't think we've got a response. They're still pointing fingers at each other. And I've asked that we make sure we're assessing the fines.
Well, remember, we're going under the nuisance abatement process, so that if they do not clean it up, then the county will do it and then assess the fees necessary to recover the cost.
How long do we have to wait before we do that?
It's 30 days under the ordinance.
And how long has it been?
Well, we notified Norfolk Southern Railroad, which was listed by our tax office as actually the owner of the right-of-way, that they claim that they don't have ownership of that right-of-way. I don't know if that is accurate, or whether they're trying to push it off perhaps on a less E, just speaking... a less E, Chesapeake and Albemarle Railroad, as being a responsible party, but in any event, we'll get to the bottom of that and get the responsible party to address the concern, and we'll do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What if we approached them about trying to maybe fill in and develop a swale that could be mowed by whoever maintains the highways to their working agreement out like that? Because the way it is now, it's going to be this battle every year, and if you fix it and work to be easily maintained, there might be a way to do it.
I don't have a problem with that, but you got two things. Number one, they would have to do it since it's their ditch, and number two, it can interfere with the drainage in Moyoc, so.
Well, I'm saying, so engineered, so it would not be.
I don't have a problem with that, but the problem is, is it's their responsibility, and we need to make them fulfill their responsibility. Moyoc, we're trying to clean the corridor up, and it looks like a mess through there where the overgrowth is, so.
And that still doesn't take over because the question comes back, the railroad will not maintain the state's property and the state will not maintain the railroad's property, so you still have the same.
It appeared, and we were hopeful, that the state was back on top of it and was moving toward a resolution, and I think we're probably coming to the conclusion, but that hasn't worked. So we'll have to take it back up again and follow it to its completion.
All right. I saw you making notes, so I know we're moving forward with it.
Yes, sir.
And the next thing I had is in front of the Jarvisburg School, I don't know if any of y'all have driven through there. I understand the road has got a big dip in it and it's got a hump in it. I don't know what that is, but I've got a phone call this afternoon, and they've told me they've called DOT about it. DOT has not gone down to see it and work on it, so I'll bring it forward, ask the staff to contact DOT. Firstly, identify exactly what the problem is and contact DOT and ask them to please fix that spot in the road.
And you might want to start that letter out with a thank you for fixing the timing, excuse me, of the whites in Moyoc.
Yeah.
Yeah. Started out sweet and then forward, but they have missed that.
We need to thank them when they do what we want done, but we also need to continue when we need stuff as well.
I have a question, just before closing, since you opened the subject about the corridor cleanup.
Yes, sir.
What is happening with the corridor cleanup? We have these plans for signage and other things and talking to all the businesses and all that and everything about it for a long time.
I think that's, I think that's one of our retreat agenda items.
Yes, it is.
Where we will discuss that and give you full information.
Good, I'll count it.
All right, Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one item. We got a letter in, I believe, yesterday, and it certainly was, it's late in the process, but the Department of Agricultural is going to do their gypsy moth spraying that they have the last several years. Last year, though, we had an incident with some folks over in the Corova area that were sprayed. As part of their program, the Department of Agricultural, they will be having a public hearing Wednesday night, tomorrow night, at the Corova Volunteer Fire Department, where they will tell the citizens up there what the program is and what they're going to be doing. And they're going to have one Thursday night here at Poplar Extension for anyone that's interested in that program or could be affected by that program. They certainly can call our office, and we can share the letter we have with them. It doesn't have a whole lot of information, but we certainly will do that. And little would happen last year, I want to make sure that we got that, those two public hearings announced.
And one quick note, I asked Ms. Keen, as you have in front of you, if I have to start giving us a calendar of all the advisory board meetings, in case there's any particular meeting you'd like to go to as a commissioner, just to show your face at some point in time. So it'd be nice if we could kind of show up every once in a while at a advisory board meeting. It may run you out, but at least you can show up for a few minutes. With that, we need a motion to go on a closed session for the general statute fourteen thirty-three, one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven three to preserve attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Nelms, second from Commissioner Rohr. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, light sign.